We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. It is October 21st, 2024. This is a work session for the Shawnee County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Kevin Cook. I serve as the chair this year. Joining me today is Commissioner Aaron Mays. Good morning.
Morning.
Bill Rippon, good morning.
Morning.
Mr. Eckard, our county councillor.
Good morning.
We have one presentation this morning. This is a presentation on the annual findings of the Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence. And I'm going to turn it over to Becca Spielman. Becca, you're up.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, I want to share these with you. So while you're passing those along, and we do have extra copies as well, I just wanted to take a moment and thank each one of the county commissioners for the opportunity to speak today. It is quite fitting that I'm speaking during Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So October is Annual Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My name is Becca Spielman. I'm the Program Director for YWCA's Center for Safety and Empowerment. And I'm representing the Mayor's Task Force Against Domestic Violence in our conversation this morning about the various statistics that we've been able to pull across multiple sectors. With me today are several members of the Mayor's Task Force, so if you all don't mind taking a moment and just kind of waving your hands. So we're very excited to have them as well. Like I said, we put a lot of love into this report, and hopefully you will find it to be very helpful. So just a little bit about the Mayor's Task Force. Our goal is to hold offenders, those who cause harm, those who are perpetrating domestic violence accountable, and ensuring that victims and survivors find safety through collaboration, education, and prevention for ultimately a safe and just community. This is the second year that we are presenting these findings to the county commission. So we are really excited that we've been able to kind of poll numbers over the course of three years and are hoping to develop some kind of clear analysis of what we're seeing within our community. But this report, similar to last year's report, has been polled from a number of different places. The Shawnee County District Attorney's Office, the City of Topeka's Municipal Court, our local law enforcement agencies, the Health Department, Kansas Legal Services, Disability Rights Center of Kansas, battering intervention programs here in town that are credited or certified through the Attorney General's Office, Stormont Vale Health, and then various victim service providers. And this is looking entirely at the calendar year of 2023. This slide provides a little more information about the various task members or task force members that are involved in this. We meet on a monthly basis, and as you can see, members of a lot of different cross-sections within our community, within our county, are represented not only in this report but also in that meeting space. So a little bit about the statistics and the information that we have in front of us. So what we were able to poll, and it's throughout the report, so feel free to take a look at the report if that's helpful to you. We had over 2,000 domestic violence calls that were made to law enforcement agencies, and that includes numbers from the Shawnee County Sheriff's Department or office as well. 1,314 arrests were made. Of those domestic violence calls, 923 victims and survivors scored high on the lethality assessment. And just to give you a little bit of context, our lethality assessment is, the numbers that we get, the statistics that we receive, come from the Topeka Police Department. So this is only reflective of TPD's response to domestic violence. And anytime there's a domestic violence call or case, once they're able to de-escalate the situation, create safety for the victim survivor, they'll do an assessment which determines the level of danger that a person is experiencing in their relationship. So when someone scores high on the lethality assessment, essentially that means that there is a likelihood of homicide in that case. So these lethality assessments are really doing a lot to prevent homicides within our community. We had 1,200 referrals that were made to the District Attorney's Office and the City of Topeka's Municipal Court combined, and 910 cases were filed. There were 266 documented incidents of protection order violations that occurred within the calendar year 2023. And those are those cases that are documented to law enforcement, so there's a good chance that that is a low number in comparison to what we see. 177 Shawnee County residents were represented by both Kansas Legal Services and the Disability Rights Center of Kansas in protection order cases. Furthermore, as we look at some of the other information in front of us, 91 battering intervention assessments were completed. And for those of you that may not know, battering intervention programming is considered best practices for offender accountability and treatment. And so when folks are utilizing these services, that is what we see as research-based best practice intervention. 284 patients reported that they did not feel safe in their relationships, which is a new questionnaire that we are, that the Stormont Vale Health is implementing in their screening tools. So in addition to screening for domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and abuse, they're also asking a general question about whether or not folks feel safe in their relationships. So these are 284 patients who may not have provided that information previously. And then 825 victims and survivors of domestic violence living in Shawnee County received advocacy services from the Department of Corrections, Washburn University, and the Center for Safety and Empowerment. So some of the major findings and considerations that we have in this document. So in the past two years, we've looked at the strengths of this particular report and opportunities for growth. This year, per the City of Topeka's governing body or the city council, they asked for ZIP Code data in order to be able to get a better sense of where these things are happening in our community. And so the ZIP Code data comes from local law enforcement. So this is not specific to victim services agencies, but this is where the calls are going in terms of where law enforcement is responding. And so there were a couple of things that we noted within the ZIP Code data, but I want to defer quickly to the considerations and unmet needs first. So a couple of things that we determined in being able to better support survivors and victims is recognizing that there's a lack of affordable housing within our community. Again, this is not new information to anyone in this room, and limited public transportation. And both of those things serve as significant barriers to victims and survivors. The National Network to End Domestic Violence states 98% to 99% of all domestic violence, relationships in which there's domestic violence, there is a financial violence component to that as well. So even in the most affluent relationships, we're still seeing that lack of affordable housing and lack of transportation, public transportation available to folks is still impacting them. Furthermore, as we look at the data within the ZIP Codes, and this will be further into the report if you want to look at that, there's a couple of things that I definitely want to highlight. So as many of you know, one in three women, one in four men, and one out of every two gender non-binary or trans identified person will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime. So on a national level, we're seeing a lot of people in Shawnee County potentially who are exposed to this type of violence. And so as we look at the ZIP Codes, it's important for us to note that regardless of socioeconomic status, regardless of wealth within those communities, we're still seeing those rates at that level. They just may not be calling law enforcement, or neighbors may not be calling law enforcement. And so there's a lot of barriers potentially to folks accessing law enforcement as a response to domestic violence. So a couple of things I just want to highlight. As we look at those ZIP Codes and the data that the Shawnee County Health Department put together to be able to see where we're seeing overlaps with domestic violence and health disparities within our communities, we have identified that the root causes of domestic violence are deeply embedded in the fabric of our communities, influenced by both economic and social factors that create environments in which violence can thrive. Addressing the social determinants of health, which the Shawnee County Health Department has done a great job within this report of identifying, not only mitigates the incidence of domestic violence, but it also builds stronger, healthier communities for all residents. So recognizing that all of these things work together, nothing happens in a vacuum. And in order to limit or eliminate domestic violence from occurring in our area, we also need to address the social health determinants that impact our residents. And then finally, I just want to say thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you all today. If you're interested in learning more about where this data came from or additional information that we can provide for you, please do not hesitate to reach out. It has been an absolute joy speaking with you, so thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Becca. I really appreciate you coming and speaking to us about the findings and presenting this to us. A question for you. As you were working with the task force, and we have some statistical numbers now, are the numbers increasing or steady? Is it that we're just becoming more aware of? It seems that a lot of times in the past, maybe domestic violence was something that you didn't report, you didn't talk about. Maybe it was within the household, but it didn't go outside of the household. What are you finding?
Yeah, I think that's a phenomenal question. So it kind of depends, truthfully, on which particular stat we're looking at. We have seen some dips in some of the statistics, but I would say overall, it does seem like the numbers are increasing in terms of the number of reports that are happening. And just like you said, Commissioner Cook, that the reality of the situation is that as more people recognize the signs and symptoms, there will be more people reporting these things, right? And getting folks connected to services that may best meet their needs. So we don't necessarily see it as more people are experiencing this in our community, but that more people are aware of it. But specific statistics I can provide for you if that would be helpful, so that you can look at, okay, are we seeing more numbers of folks reporting to law enforcement? We're definitely seeing an increase in the number of battering intervention programming services that we're seeing. And we, I think we really attribute that to the way the court system has responded to this and looking at those services versus anger management, for example, as treatment. So yeah, I'm happy to provide an analysis over the three years.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And then are we seeing some real intersections with homelessness, drug and alcohol, mental health, and then domestic violence? Are these things all related with each other?
Yes, absolutely. And even on a national level, it's around 50% of all women who experience homelessness are experiencing domestic violence. So, but we see a number of folks who have substance use disorders or addictions, if you will, folks with mental health. As you can imagine, the trauma that folks endure, really, it really interconnects in a lot of ways. And so I believe it's something like 90% of all women with addictions have experienced significant trauma in their lives. So it definitely, all of these things go hand in hand.
And the last question I had, I really appreciate you calling out the Topeka, Shawnee County Health Agency, the work that Teresa Fisher and her team do, and that the social determinants of health are a part of this. Outside of the Health Department, are there things that your task force has identified that Shawnee County, and specifically us as commissioners, might be looking at or working on in trying to address this issue?
Yeah, I think for us, the biggest pieces that we're looking at right now in Ways for Advocacy is the issues of affordable housing and increased need for public transportation. Those are the two things that I think across all sectors we determined are the real unmet needs within our community and how those things can directly impact victim survivor safety. If someone has access to safe and affordable housing, that's obviously a huge means for their safety beyond that relationship. So independence and self-sufficiency outside of that relationship. And of course, public transportation is such a huge need for folks to be able to work, get to their appointments, and we see those as the two primary issues.
Okay. Commissioner Mays, Commissioner Rippon?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So you mentioned in the statistics slide, there were 2,107 calls and 1,314 arrests. That's a lot of calls without arrests. You know, I had always sort of anecdotally heard that like if they get called out for domestic, they have to arrest somebody, basically. So could you kind of explain how that works? I mean...
Yeah, and forgive me because I'm not a part of law enforcement. I don't want to speak for them. But my understanding is that there are a number of different factors. So you're absolutely right. There is a requirement that if there is some level of probable cause, that an individual would be arrested, right? If they're able to determine who the primary aggressor is. However, I've been told that there are a lot of individuals who flee the scene, and so it becomes impossible to arrest at that time. There are situations in which they respond and determine that there, it really isn't a domestic violence incident. Maybe a neighbor called and what they thought was happening wasn't happening. So I think there's a lot of factors at play, but you're exactly right. Typically speaking, if I can determine that there has been domestic violence, then typically there is an arrest per statute.
Okay. And then kind of to follow up on that, out of those, you know, 2,000 calls, you know, you always hear stories about like, oh, the police were there every weekend, you know? Like, how many of those are like the same house over and over again?
Right. So in the report, it does speak to particularly, I believe, the Shawnee County Sheriff's Office spoke to how many times they were returning to those houses. When we looked at the data for the lethality assessments, we saw that there were, I believe it was 1,100, it may have, I believe it was 1,100 unique perpetrators in the city. So they are, the law enforcement agencies are looking at how many times are we coming out to the same location? How many times are we identifying that offender? And then we're communicating with prosecutors to let them know, hey, this is, there's a multiple, you know, there are multiple offenses that have happened in this home or with this particular offender. So it definitely elevates the concern if someone is having to respond every month or so.
Right.
Yeah.
And then my last question, you've mentioned the intervention programs and kind of how that works with the courts. But are there intervention programs that are more kind of upstream, like before the arrest, before the, before they go to court where, I mean, there's something happening with this referral program or something like that?
Sure. Yeah, I don't know. Do you feel comfortable talking, Steve, about the battering intervention program? So Steve Halli is one of the co-founders of the Family Peace Initiative. And so that's one of the certified battering intervention programs in our community. So do you feel comfortable talking a little bit about prevention? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Sure, if you want to, yeah.
I appreciate the interest, Commissioner. There's a big push nationally in battering intervention programs to get the word out that people do not have to be arrested in order to come and get treatment. However, people who haven't been arrested tend to not want to participate in the group process. They tend to want to go to couples counseling. They tend to want to go into individual kind of work. There's, generally speaking, a real fear of men primarily coming into groups, a group format. And so many times, getting people to come to an intervention like that requires some kind of offense building with the criminal justice system kind of offers is the boundaries of funneling people into where the help is going to work. But we are really interested in how to increase the number of voluntary participants in our programs, you know, nationwide, and reduce the number that are ordered in through the criminal justice system. And we're eagerly talking about that right now, so.
Okay.
And you do some youth programming as well, correct?
I'm sorry.
You do some youth programming as well, correct?
Yeah, one of the things that our participants often say is, I wish I would have gotten this information when I was in middle school and high school. And the Family Peace Initiative has been developing a pretty robust youth initiative program that's working with justice-involved youth primarily. And we'd like to be able to open that up to serving just youth who are volunteers and, you know, families are recognizing there's a difficulty here and are looking for help. But right now, what we're doing is really focusing on justice-involved youth, trying to minimize the impact of domestic violence as they move to adulthood. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Rippon, did you have some?
Yes, I did. Becca, you used the term lethality, and you had a number associated with that. What qualifies as lethality?
So there's actually quite a bit of research that's been done on this. So there are 11 different factors that are associated with lethality, essentially. And I can provide that assessment to you all. But some of those factors include the use of a weapon, threatening to kill someone, strangulation, having access to a gun. All of those things independently are indicators of what could be considered lethality or high lethality in situations. And so it's based on a score that you receive once you're doing the assessment in its entirety.
I did a police ride along one night, and they arrested a couple, a man and a wife, for domestic squabble of some sort. And they were both arrested because they both saw a little sign, one of them had a scratch on her face, another guy, his thumb bit or whatever. And I said, what will happen here? And he says, usually neither one of them will press charges, and they'll be out on Monday. And is that typical? Is that what you see a lot of?
I think when it comes to domestic violence, it's really complicated, the relationship itself. It's a lot different than what you might think of as someone being assaulted by a stranger, right? Because there's a relationship involved. Typically, there are children or some kind of connection that keeps that couple together. And so there are a number of barriers that prevent someone from leaving after a first assault. In regards to not pressing charges and those kinds of things, I do think that's where the city, the state, comes in and says, this is out of your hands. And so depending on the situation, it's actually the prosecutors that are taking that charge, leading that direction. And so it's not really up to the victim survivor to make that determination.
All right. Any other questions? Becca, I really want to thank you for your time in coming over here and educating us a little bit. Please do keep us updated as the task force develops, and this is something that we want to look at. And if there are things that you identify that we as county commissioners can address or keep in mind as it relates to this, please do drop us a note or a line or come back and make a presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you all so much for your time.
All right. That brings us to public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment this morning?
Good morning. Henry McClure. I've been inundated over the past week from people that watch the show or watch, follow things of interest about the First Amendment rights of people that come up here and speak. And it seems like I win the day as far as what I say and being interrupted by your group. And it's, if we're going to turn this into a back and forth, that's great. But our phone call, appreciate you calling me back after that. But our phone call kind of left me wanting because it ended kind of abruptly. And the fact that I think that I want to dig in, that we have 1,100 people that still owe us taxes, and the thought that we might wait one year to collect that money just doesn't seem right. I just don't think we're doing it right between the treasurer, the county commission, and your county councillor. I just don't think we're doing it right. And we are a republic. And if I've insulted people with Shawnee County, it was just directed right here. One thing that I've learned from coming to these meetings since I put my name on the ballot, there's a lot of great people out there. And I've never intentionally tried to insult anybody. And I kind of take deference to you, Kevin, that saying that I have insulted them, every employee of Shawnee County, it's a shame. We all know that some people might not agree with my personality. But I ought to be able to come up here and talk and have my say as a citizen. And the only reason I threw my hat in the ring to become a county commissioner was as a citizen and a professional in this community. I just don't like the way things are done. And I just think that we need to do things differently. I truly do. I think if a constituent calls his county commissioner, he shouldn't be told to make a CORA request. You have the information right at your fingertips. Why make another step for me just to learn something? Why would you stand in the way? There's been times that I've come down here and then I'm lectured, well, that's really a city issue. Well, I'm still a citizen of Shawnee County, and I'm just trying to use your influence that you have because you're so much more diplomatic than me to work with the city officials. You can say it so much better. Not unhinged. But you set the tone between you and me the day you gave me the book after a meeting here, the children's book about county government. That was not a cool situation. I've made a living in Topeka, not as well as some, because I think government infringes. And I think that government has different playing fields for different people and what your last name is. But I definitely know how government works and doesn't work a lot better than anybody sitting there, based on the College Hill development that I did, Heritage Tractor, Benefit District out on 45th and California, just trying to bring Chick-fil-A and Whataburger in. So I deal with it day to day, and I know where the obstructions are. One thing I do like about this group, and I will give you, I will compliment this group for the presentation you made on the taxes, you know, from 10,000 feet, that was very professional and informative. And a lot of people have said, wow, that was good. But there's things in there, there's some good things in there that we learned, and there's some things we learned we can do different. I appreciate your time this morning, and I really appreciate not being interrupted. That's nice. Thank you. Henry McClure.
Any other public comment this morning? Brings us to administrative communications. Are there any administrative communications to the county commission this morning?
Good morning, Commissioner. It's Brian Cole, Shawnee County Department of Corrections. Last week, we celebrated and recognized staff for their years of service. And we had one officer at the Department of Corrections, Jeffrey Hall, who was represented. Jeff lost his life in his battle to cancer, and we had his funeral last week. It was very tough for us at the Department of Corrections. Jeff served admirably for this community. He laid his life on the line at the Department of Corrections, would have helped anybody. But I just wanted to say that he appreciated, in talking with his family, he appreciated everything that this commission and everything that this community has done for him, his family. So I just ask everybody to please keep Jeff, his family, the Department of Corrections, especially his family at the Department of Corrections, the Juvenile Detention Center, who were there to celebrate his life and to say thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that we're going to miss him.
Thank you, Brian, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Tim Lurick, Parks and Recreation Department. Just another quick reminder about our Gates Park Master Plan Open House. It's tomorrow night at Big Gates Shelter House in Gates Park, 6:30 to 8:30. Come out and look at what we've put together, and hopefully we gather a lot of public input. Thank you.
Any other administrative communications this morning? Commissioner Rippon?
I don't have anything to add.
Commissioner Mays?
Nothing for me today.
I don't have anything either. It brings us to an adjournment, and then I understand that we have a direct... And then I understand that we have a directors and elected officials meeting directly following this. And then we'll see back on Thursday.